2:00 P. M. I'll call this council meeting order. If you please rise.
One place to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill O'Connor, here. Sandy Borah, here. Spencer Kingery, here. Mike Tyson, here.
We move next to a meeting in approval. We have minutes from June 1st, 2020, regular meeting. Are there any additional suggestions, additions, or amendments to be made to this seven minutes? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Poses? We move next to a minute for June 15th, 2020, special meeting. Any additional suggestions, conditions, or amendments to be made to this seven minutes? Is that motion to approve?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Counselor McHenry with the motion. Do we have a second?
I think.
Do we have a second? Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Of those? We move next to Ms. Nelson. We move next to a public hearing on additional appropriation. The time is 6:04 P. M. I'll call the public hearing order. The additional appropriation as stated is $300,000 from Edit, $300,000 from the general fund, and $80,000 from the Riverboat Tax Fund for the purposes of sidewalk work, with the understanding at the last meeting that the amount will be reduced as the council does not intend to appropriate $680,000. We have members of the public who would like to speak on the additional appropriation. Hearing done. I'll call the public hearing. It is still scheduled. We move next to Propose Resolution 2020-16, read by Title I, Resolution Appropriating Additional Funds. Is there a motion to pass the resolution on first and final reading? Motion? We have a second.
Second.
Do we have a motion in the second? Counselor Nelson, would you propose this resolution? You have the floor.
So there was a discussion last meeting about whether we should take the full amount from the Edit Fund or diversify it from the general fund for Riverboat Tax, just to keep some money in the Edit Fund for possible future projects. With a little bit more clarification that we've got last month, it sounds like Edit is a little bit more broad than I guess I originally thought. So I don't specifically know whether it matters where you're pulling it from, per se. However, I do see the point that Mayor made last meeting about, you know, having some money in Edit for a project. And so the Riverboat money, the Riverboat Tax money just hanging out there, I don't see why it can't be used. So I would say that I'm still bored, just kind of reusing it, but it's different values. I don't know that it matters. I think we probably need to call the Riverboat Tax, but then it's what they're meaning to or something. But yeah, I'm still bored, just kind of splitting it up.
Any other discussion on the proposed resolution?
I have a question. Aren't there slaking sidewalks already, like on the number today?
At this time, we have about five or six private units who've expressed interest in doing the 50/50 matching program with the city. Kind of delayed waiting to see what we would do in terms of whether we're going to do 100% or whether we're going to keep the 50/50 matching program. So yes, there is some, but that's the problem. Last year and the year before, we had around 13 on average. Five, six.
I'll come to say something real quick. There's been like zero projects done with the 50/50 match so far this year.
And part of that is we're waiting to see whether we can do 100% of what we're doing now, plus some of our locations where we're doing other projects. Any other suggestions, questions, or thoughts?
I wanted to share that going back over the road board plan that you presented us before the June 15th meeting, you had some figures in there that if we went ahead and appropriated this additional money, we could basically go from about 4,000 linear feet of sidewalk replacement and improvement to closer to 7,000 feet, which I thought would be a good return on our investment to almost double the amount of footage that we could cover. And I did have a concern that if we look at another $300,000 from Edit tonight, we've advertised $300,000 from Edit for the June 15th hearing. We've advertised $300,000 for tonight. We've already appropriated $100,000 of the extra Edit money for the Small Business Resilient Grant that was Edit money budgeted for this calendar year. I don't think we can look at appropriating another $300,000 tonight from Edit because that would put us over sufficient funds from what we would actually have available to use. So somewhere along the line tonight, we need to clean up some of this with these resolutions because we're actually advertising to expend more money than we would sufficiently have.
Do we have any other discussion on that resolution? Counselor Nelson, you indicated possibly amending the resolution. Is that such a motion you would like to make?
Yeah. I'd like to reset. We could have like another round of discussion about like how everybody thinks about that supply. Here's the point for my point, so.
Clearly, the thoughts in terms of, I guess, Counselor Nelson, is your intention to try to get up to $300,000 total in additional appropriation? So how the council might see this going out? Do we have a discussion on that?
What I think exactly are you looking for?
So we want to clear a thousand. We got $80,000 in total, right? Some, almost ninety. Do the ninety, ninety, eighty, ninety thousand from Riverboat, and then the remaining of the old three hundred comes from each of the general fund if we get that fund. So what is that? How much? Around $200, five? About $5,000 being from the general fund. And Edit, and the remaining, eighty to ninety, comes from Riverboat for a total of 300.
Other discussion on that?
We've spent zero this year on Riverboat.
And not zero. We've spent some on Riverboat, just not on private, on the 50/50.
Do you know how much?
I can't remember.
So it says, your original appropriate, I guess, for the traditional meeting. So I guess we have to do a reading on Riverboat.
No, you, well, you just can't go over reading.
So the honor, the honors and doubt, which is general, Edit?
Other discussion on this?
Can I share something with you, sir?
Yeah.
Part of the documentation we got from the mayor for the June 15th meeting, he wrote an opinion about opposing the use of the Edit Funds, that he did say that he believed we should appropriate money for sidewalk replacement. Part of his opinion was that Edit Funds can be used for any lawful purpose for which money in any other of the city's funds may be used, and he quoted Indiana Code for that. I'm not sure that was you. And he said he was opposed to using the Edit Funds, especially in that amount, when we could get a better return for our investment. I don't see, I still don't see an issue with taking the 300 from Edit. And I think I shared with you after the meeting, and I'll share with you at the council, because there is a little more accountability required to use Edit Funds since it has to be reported through the DLGF. They no longer have to write a sufficient report of act choice, but it does have to be reported if you use these funds to partner with government and finance. And as in the documentation I shared with you this week, we have some packets there from the DLGF regarding their standing on fellow caring and mission appropriations during this crisis. So I shared a copy of that with you as well there, and it's one there. And it's behind your mic there on the side. So I wanted to share that. I was directed to give that today when I contacted the government office. They said, look at this and pull up this information. So I wanted to share that with you. But again, I would just say that I don't, I don't see that there is a huge issue with pulling money from one fund, because Edit Funds can be used for anything the city uses votes for. And that was in the mayor's opinion that he wrote, and he cited the code for that. And I looked at the code, and that's one of the bottom points to that Indiana Code.
But I don't have my opinion in front of me. I believe I cited that as stating that, yes, it can be used for any lawful purpose, but I believe the intention of my statement was to indicate that there's other uses that it can be made for other than general funds, or other than for any other lawful purpose from a general fund. When they have started this sentence, it's what I understand.
Right. Well, funds can be used for your purpose.
So it wasn't justification to not use Edit. It was a statement that Edit can be used for sidewalks.
So what is your opposition to using Edit Funds?
That there are other manners in which Edit Funds should be used within that Indiana Code that may not be available within other funds of the city.
Give me an example.
I mean, you have there.
I understand your statement.
Probably private partnerships was one of the listed uses. I believe, like a revolving loan fund, they have been listed as one of the possible uses. I think there's a list of what they use, but I think $300,000. That could be checked out.
Oh, the fund states that the Edit Funds can be used for anything that any other funds can be used for.
That is one of the ways that they have much.
Right. Right. But you chose to pull that out now, and so that's what I was referring to, because that's what you shared. So I know there's a list of ways to use it. But I also know, and I shared with the council, that they need to work with the planning to see that Edit Money has been used for things like parties and flowers and news. And it really hasn't been used in the past over years for limited capital outlays. And I feel like this is a way that we can get a better return on our investment, and the citizens can get a better return on their investment because this is their tax money.
Someone explain to me. So what is this about the additional square footage or non-square footage for additional, or?
He had a body of road plan that he shared with us. He raised that documentation for the June 15th meeting. And one of the sections in there talked about, it was $4,000 inside as to 7,700. We had appropriate money to do it now, rather than waiting. I think he had that in the road plan for 2,023 or something, a few years down the road. But if we expend additional monies now to repair these sidewalks.
So you're saying that that's.
We can use, we can cover and repair and improve closer to 7,000 linear feet as opposed to 4,000 linear feet.
Would we have to appropriate more money for that project?
By what?
Would we have to appropriate more money for the project to get that?
If we can appropriate this money that we're talking about appropriating and doing the sidewalks now as opposed to years down the road, we can actually cover more and get a better return on our investment.
I partially agree with that statement. Spending the money now should yield us more linear feet than if we waited two years, construction costs accelerating, and watching for 10% a year. I don't think it would. I think that $3,000, $3,000 difference was if we didn't do an additional appropriation versus if we did do an additional appropriation.
It says that an additional appropriation, and you had used 400,000, you corrected yourself to 300,000. In 2020, the estimated feet of walk replaced outside of the road plan jumps from 4,346 to 7,645 feet. Those are your words.
So that we would give roughly $3,000 in feet of Edit, 400,000 dollars.
I believe that's an excellent return on the investment for the citizens, since this is their tax money.
So I have a question. How much are we actually, are we wanting to get it $300,000 mark? Is that, is that what the goal is? I mean, out of different accounts? It's just a $15,000 amount in the total.
We've advertised $970,000 for the additional appropriations, what we've advertised. Almost a million dollars.
With the discussion that we had in the last meeting, that we would reduce the amount. I believe the total of $300,000 was. The discussion last meeting, but it doesn't necessarily have to be that. The council could additionally appropriate $680,000 tonight. They still wanted, that is a lot of work. And I'll kind of relate to the council. Counselor Nelson called me earlier today. Just because you appropriated, let's say, $300,000, it doesn't mean we're going to be able to get this work done this year. I mean, you're talking about substantial amount of work. The planning for Aaron and I, especially when we've got Samuel Road going on, and we've got the water project going on, and we've got everything else going on. We're talking about a decent-sized project for $300,000. We've got to go out, we've got to imagine, we've got to look at every single street review. Are there trees in the way? Are there ramps? We need to connect to a cycle coming down the house. We're going to be additional curve to the radius. We have a ramp coming down. Then we've got to put that all into dead documentation. We've got to advertise. Dids come back. We've got to review those dids, board the project, get a notice received. I mean, we're talking about fairly substantial amount of work on the executive branch's side of things. Ideally, the most construction projects, you want to get them over the ramp, because you tend to get better prices because contractors aren't filled up with everything else they're doing in the summer or in the fall. So even if, I mean, I want to be optimistic and say, if you get a set $300,000, it's going to be some sidewalks done. I cannot guarantee that we could just be wrong.
But we could be wrong, though. We could give the money, start planning, and it's like, says a lot of work. And even if they don't finish till next year.
We can secure a better price now than. So this is running. I think too that we need to probably look at having a little more specific wording in this legislation than just 400, 300,000 dollars for sidewalks. We need to be a little more specific about which sidewalks we're looking at, you know, what we've rated sidewalks, and what exactly we're looking at. And that takes in, for our attorney, my office, but I don't know.
But we would get the money set aside, right, and do all the details later for the act to happen.
No, I mean, you can set the money aside right now.
Essentially, aside.
Put a schedule.
What we want to do, and then, you know, okay, here in a month or two, we'll say, okay, here's a sidewalk for monitoring price. And we could get the money and say, here's what we want to do, and then start defining after that, right?
Correct. And ultimately, it being the executive branch that determines, as you guys are so specific, I think, appropriate for this section of the road to replace the sidewalk. I mean, if you were that specific, then we'd have to do those specific roads. But ultimately, it would be for public works and safety that we decide after the hearing from Aaron Martin.
Because I know that's always legal, so how can you act in all this, um, how do you do this? Let's just give the money set aside, make a plan, good. We can pick up pieces and do what we have to do. Rather than another meeting about this, okay, well, let's put off till here, put off till here. It doesn't cost so much. Let's do something. And they should probably.
How much?
Say that money, maybe we could just, it should be, it could be.
Yes, it could.
It would be have to be taken out. At the same time, we could also spin down appropriations during the budget process and budget in $300,000 on top of what you normally would. It's gotten out of whatever fund. And then we would know that the money is in there for the next year. It would be another option.
Let's play through stuff about shows in progress. You know, people know we have meetings, you know, we're talking about stuff. Let's show we are actually doing stuff. That's why we're here.
All right. Well, that's case. We're having, I would want to split out. I guess, do we have any further discussion on splitting out between those funds? All right.
So I wish we could take the $80,000 from Riverboat Tax Fund, $110,000 from the general fund, $110,000 from Edit Fund for a total of $300,000 for sidewalks replacement prepared. And we can.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to table Resolution 20, third, not two, to amend Resolution 2020-16 to the amounts of $80,000 from Riverboat, $110,000 from Edit, $110,000 from the general fund, if I recite correctly. All right. We will allow discussion on the amendment.
Yeah, I lost my word there. So, you know, I do think we should do something. We have all this money in Edit Fund. It would be a miracle. But keeping in mind also the possible ability of a second wave of COVID and just other projects that we're going to use on COVID front, better off, I was finding money in my experience.
All right. Do we have any other discussion regarding the amendment to the proposed resolution?
I want to discuss this, this 300,000. I would just do different accounts. Is that for people to just have new sidewalks, or is this 50/50?
It's my, it's my understanding that's for 100%. We have $100,000 in 50/50 for, that we could use 50/50 for sidewalks, that we could use. Some of it doesn't contribute, but not the whole.
So what happens now?
We would likely use that to go towards the 100% as well. And it looks like we have spent $2,124.24 as of the last quarter from the 60th meeting out of the sidewalk fund, primarily for stones, straw, dirt, and seed. I believe we had some sidewalks that we did last year, but we moved them out again this year.
We have $100,000 every year for that.
And every year since 2016.
So we essentially have almost $400,000 left for current sidewalk, but not set up.
Correct.
How many sidewalks is that? How far, how far should money go?
I should have brought my stuff from last meeting. I had it all. I did it all.
On top of what Sandy's saying, the difference between the 4,000 sidewalk feet and then the 7,000, does that incorporate what we recorded, what you set out, use for your better, or is that adding on to the term for now, we're sitting in on? How's that, how do you figure that out? Sorry.
I don't remember. And I didn't bring it with me. I apologize. I'm trying to even think of what you asked. Were the present representative of Congress still have the documentation from last meeting? Still have the documentation from last meeting regarding sidewalk policies? Riverboat. I should be able to find it. While we're waiting on me, any other further discussion regarding the proposed breakout?
How long that we have Resolution 2020-16 as amended?
Um, let's, we need to take a vote on the amendment first, and then we'll.
That's right.
You guys can find waiting, two minutes. Let's see if I can. I'm not going to be able to make this to the spreadsheet. So we have a motion in the second to amend Propose Resolution 2020-16. Any further discussion on that? A question as to amending Propose Resolution 2020-16. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries by here. And then I'll accept the motion to pass the amended resolution.
Motion passed the amended resolution.
All right. Counselor McHenry, we have a second. Bill O'Connor, any further discussion? Call a question as to passing Propose Resolution 2020-16 as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right. So now we have Propose Resolution 2020-14. We should be doing that with. I guess I would ask for, unless we want to appropriate more funds for Edit, I would ask for a motion to postpone that.
Wait a moment, please. Do we need to pull this from the table with this resolution on this table at the last meeting? I think we need to pull it from the table and then write it down. And one of the four people in the majority has to pull it from the table, has to make a motion to pull it off the table. And then we can write it down, and it's there.
That is probably technically, because I, we've never.
procedurally, that's.
Yeah. I think procedurally, I don't know if we've ever done it before.
We have not, or like, maybe it's easier here.
Uh. So I'll come to you.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I think it was specifically intelligence.
Well, my apologies. So I'm here for me. So I don't know what the language around the table.
I understand. We have a motion pulled from the table. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Go ahead. I don't know if that's available or not. All those in favor, pull it from the table?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
I was, I was an I.
But you, okay, an I, I don't think. All right. Do you have a minute to pull from the table? Do we have a motion to postpone definitely? All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Don't we discuss it after it comes off the table?
Well, we got an amendment to pass it. Or to do anything with it. I guess we did last meeting.
Well, correction, correction is.
As a debatable motion, so.
I don't know that it's like.
But I, I made a motion that we still, and you made a motion, you asked for a motion to postpone it, like that. If we leave it on the table, we're still going to try to have the option of having this money appropriated at some point in time.
So you would like to pull up the table more than that?
Yes, and write it down. That is what I suggested, so I'm sorry.
I thought postpone definitely had the same.
That can come back to function at some point in time.
Agreed.
Thank you.
I admittedly don't know that's enough about the motion. I don't know what the harm would be in bringing it off the table. We'd rather than loading it.
Well, what do we do with the motion in the second to postpone definitely? I mean, we've already got that out there.
We do. You're right. So at some point, I think, does it could come back to the table, correct? So at some point, I think it could come back to the table, correct?
It could be, um, addressed by law. Can you present, can you present what you said?
I don't.
But what's, but to postpone it definitely, since that's on the table and then I'm gonna make a motion to resent it so that it just goes away?
But if we post, if we vote it, if we vote to postpone it, then definitely, yeah, we're gonna have to bring it back from the table to vote on it to kill it.
Was the motion to postpone it definitely made?
Yes.
Was there a second? Yeah.
Okay, here's, here's what Robert Wilson says. Postpone definitely is a motion that the Assembly declined to take a decision on the main question. Its adoption kills the main motion for the duration of the session and avoids a direct vote on the question.
And during this session.
Yeah, that's.
We're taking a lot of that.
Well, if it's done for a session, now we don't have sessions like other people do.
So we can just.
But let's say that it kills the question.
It does, and I suppose it is brought back up to the legal court.
And that, I mean, somebody could, next month, you bring.
It's a one situation. Yeah.
Which you could bring a resolution next month and say you want to additionally appropriate three hundred and one thousand dollars on a matter to go to the next current fund. So let's state that postpone definitely effectively kills proposal resolution twenty twenty dash fourteen. Do we have any discussion on postponing definitely? All right, I'll call the question as to postponing definitely, proposal resolution twenty twenty dash fourteen, all as a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I brought a little. All right, move back to the proposal contract with the Economic Development Corporation. Would ask for a motion in the second to yield support to the PDC Director for laws for an explanation of the contract. And the project is the EDC, we have a second motion in the second.
Motion so.
Do we have a second? All right, all as a favor? Aye. Sorry, let's try that again, turn that way. All as a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Director Walz, you got the floor.
Mayor, uh, where would you like me to stand?
I'd like to stand.
I guess maybe I should.
Where the camera can get you.
Well, see, I kind of like, I mean, I don't mind the voice.
Make sure you speak up.
Okay, will do. A little hard too with the big muffled button. Um, well, good evening, uh, thanks for, uh, having me. Um, I've been, uh, Mayor Evans and I, um, kind of went back and forth on a, a contract for services. Um, in the past, we've done multiple year, four-year contracts between, uh, the EDC and the, um, and the city of Delphi along with the towns of Burlington, Camden, and Flora and the county for economic and community development services. Um, part of that, uh, contract, we represent the city of Delphi in business attraction, retention, um, working with our, uh, local employers. We've also, um, been active on the community development side, um, especially with, uh, the stellar project. Um, I, I'll give a quick report on how twenty twenty's been. Uh, I've been at the EDC for ten years now, I've been in economic development for fifteen years. Uh, people have been in much longer, no one's ever seen anything like this. And, uh, it's, it's been really challenging. In February, March, we were, uh, really active with two projects that were moving quickly. And, uh, we were getting some, we were, we, our pipeline was, was looking pretty good and the spigot just turned off. Uh, we still have one project that's moving forward. Our other big project is completely on hold right now. And, uh, we, it, just in the last week, we started getting leads again. Uh, we just got an international lead last week. Uh, we have our board meeting, uh, this Thursday, so, um, getting kind of some news that the, uh, that the board hasn't, hasn't, uh, got yet, but, uh, we're, our phone is starting to ring again and we're, uh, we're starting to see activity, which is, uh, which is great news for us. Uh, we're happy for it. Um, one of the other things that the EDC does for the city of Delphi is administer the, uh, Delphi Redevelopment Commission. Uh, we helped, we were, uh, we helped create that back in, uh, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. Um, right after we created it, there was a reassessment on one of the, uh, largest, um, uh, properties, the former Peter's Remington facility. So our TIP district was in a bit of a hole. We had frozen the base and then with the reassessments, we were, we were kind of in a hole. Uh, this year, um, we're out of the hole and we, we're going to start having, um, funds to do some projects in the basically central business district of Delphi, um, the North Washington Industrial Corridor, and then also the US four twenty-one, uh, West Side, uh, Northwest Side. Uh, that's basically the, um, the TIP district boundaries. Uh, so we had a, we had a virtual redevelopment commission meeting last month and we're hoping to meet next month to, uh, start, uh, thinking about, um, how we want, how the redevelopment commission wants to appropriate those funds. Uh, we've been in that spot before, we've kind of had some false starts, uh, as Anita can attest to, she's a, a long time redevelopment commission member. Uh, we've had some false starts, uh, but, um, we, the, the money's in the city coffers now, so the, uh, so we'll actually be able to do some projects and I know the redevelopment commissions are excited about that, to finally get to that stage. Um, you are represented on the EDC Board of Directors right now by Joe Mayfield and Ken Walton. Uh, Dick Trigger was our president, uh, the last couple of years until he stepped away at the end of last year. Uh, Joe and Ken are both on the Executive Committee of the Board. Ken is our treasurer and even though Joe Mayfield is not immediate past president anymore, uh, since we lost Dick and Dick couldn't fill that role, uh, Joe's maintained, Joe's remained in that position and just brings that institutional knowledge, uh, because he was a long time, uh, EDC Board President. So you have two very, uh, very instrumental and active members on the board. Uh, we have the, the contract, I believe you guys, do they have that in there?
Yes, no.
Okay. Uh, the contract is for, uh, through twenty twenty-one. Um, it's, um, pretty similar to the terms in the past. Uh, it's based on ten dollars and fifty cents per person. That is the rate, uh, that all of the municipalities pay. Um, Burlington, Flora, and the county have, uh, are already entered into contracts. Uh, you guys will be number four and then we'll, we will go to the town of Camden after this. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Councilman, we have any questions for Ms. Walsh?
Um, I do. Can you share with us why the contract was not brought before the past council, but therefore your contract expired in July of two thousand nineteen?
Right, we didn't take the new contract, um, well, one thing, it was a, um, you, you guys are going to be the council that works with us, so it seemed, um, it didn't seem wise to enter into a four-year contract, which at that time we were looking at a four-year contract, uh, with a council that wasn't going to be the council we worked with. We wanted to work with the, uh, the current council. Um, we did that with the other communities as well. Um, unfortunately, we got to the other communities before COVID hit, so that's why we're a little bit behind. Uh, and talking to Mayor Evans, uh, um, several months ago, he wanted to see how the other, he wanted to make sure that the other communities in the county, uh, signed on.
Has the county entered into a contract with you?
Yes.
For what start date?
Uh, it was January one of twenty twenty through December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
So you're not asking for a contract for this calendar year?
Um, we, we can do, we can do the start date however you want.
No, I'm, I'm asking you, what, what specifically are you asking for a start date of? This, this was a little bit confusing because it was marked through and I couldn't really tell if it was twenty twenty or twenty twenty one.
And I guess, President President Connor, I did, um, she sent me a one-year contract. Um, the previous council during by the time requested that it be a minimum of a two-year contract because then it would go before the common council. Um, if it was just for this calendar year, when that would go before the council, this contract would be what it was.
Yeah, I, I know that they, they cast legislation to change the terms from four years to two years. I, I remember when they did that, because Carolyn made the motion to do that. And they, and I remember they passed legislation to change the terms of the contract. Cause I, I was kind of confused too with the fact that I know this, this four-year contract started in July of two thousand fifteen and ran through July. So are you now looking to work on the, the true calendar year instead of a?
Yes, um, so previously, uh, it was based on, um, it was based on our, our fiscal year was set up to Gil, July one through June thirtieth. And that was at the request of the county, um, because the, the county, uh, received the, their edit installment, uh, their edit funds and installments throughout the year. And so they build up their fund and they would pay us out, um, in the, either the third or fourth quarter of a calendar year. And that would be early, that'd be in the first half of our fiscal year. Um, a couple of years ago, and we're still trying to deal with ramifications of that, we're, we switched to a calendar year again at the request of the county, um, we, we switched to a calendar year budget, but our contracts hadn't caught up yet. Um, this, so this is the first contract, um, since we switched to a calendar year for our budget. So we want, we want to get the contracts onto a, on a calendar year and get everyone on this, on the same schedule.
Are you a member of the board of repair county EDC?
I'm an exhibitionist.
Site as a.
I'm an exhibition member. I'm a fellow tower.
Yes.
And then I have a question, I noticed from the four-year contract previously to the two-year contract, you're changing the signatory individuals as well. Can somebody tell me who made that change and why?
Uh, I made the change, I mean, by president of the Delphi County Council, as I am the president of the Delphi County Council, I just changed it from mayor of the city of Delphi. And there is state statute that the mayor shall execute all contracts of the city.
Because in the past, Dick was not truly the president, he signed it as the president. So Randy Stausser was the mayor, he signed to attest as the mayor. So you're saying that it should have been signed by the mayor, then that really wasn't a real contract. Because you're telling me, and I, and I totally agree that you are the president of the city council, that Dick Trigger signed this previous contract as the president of the city council. So that's an illegal contract.
Do you matter, I don't know if it matters at this time?
That you don't know if it matters that it's, it's illegal?
At this time.
So we, the contract really is, uh, mostly to protect the EDC and the city, the, the city council and administration. So we have the same expectations that this is what we're going to do, this is what's, this is, you know, we're laying out what we're going to do, we're all in agreement and protects us. Um, the, yeah, there's lawyers here, there's much smarter people than me, but my understanding, we don't have to have this contract. You guys appropriate the, uh, the, the thirty, thirty thousand change that, uh, the EDC receives. Um, but you don't have to necessarily have that contract to appropriate those funds.
You don't have to have the contract to appropriate the funds, but to spend the funds, um, we don't have to.
I, I beg to differ there, you have to have a contract or a purchase order to legally spend money.
Right, purchase order, so if we invoice.
No, you have to have a purchase order or a contract for an invoice. The purchase order and the contract orders the goods, the invoice bills for the goods. We cannot, we cannot enter into anything that's payment is going to trade, trade hands here unless we have a contract or a purchase order.
I was just thinking of like other examples, like, um, like other towns.
Trying to beat you up, I'm.
No, no, you're.
This is something new for all of us, we're all right new, we need to learn, we need to learn what your services offer to us.
Right.
Because the EDC has not had a contract with the city for the last twelve months.
Right.
From two thousand nineteen, so can you give us an example of five benefits of your service that the city has received in the last, well, I guess we wouldn't be entitled to any if we weren't paying.
Well, we did not, we have not discontinued services, uh, to the city of Delphi. Uh, so I'm in a tricky split position here because this is a public meeting and it is being recorded. Uh, so I, I'm gonna have to speak in generics, um, in broad terms a little bit. Um, only because some of this information is sensitive, but, uh, five examples. Uh, one, we work very closely with Jeff Van Wilden and Dowd Dunninger on leads. There are seven businesses in Peter's Industrial Development, uh, Next Day Container that's in the Delphi industrial park next door. Uh, we worked on, we worked on attracting Next Day Container, we have procured leads and shared them with Jeff and Dow. Um, one of the, one of the companies, Cap Logistics, that's in the Peter's Industrial Development was, um, a company that was a lead generated by us that we gave to Jeff and Dow. Uh, we continue to communicate with them on a very regular basis. Um, Indiana Packers is another example, I know that is not within the city limits, but it is a very large utility user of the, of the city. We're working with them right now on, um, uh, expanding, uh, widening US four twenty-one. Uh, the mayor could, um, attest that, uh, we're working with the county redevelopment commission on, um, IPC said that, uh, that they were interested in potentially a truck entrance off of four twenty-one. And so, uh, we've been working, uh, with our, the redevelopment commission on expanding four twenty-one that is in city limits, um, basically for air hardware and, um, making it so, and then potentially some, um, upgrades to Bradford, like Bradford Court. Um, so that, that's going on now, that's in the design and engineering phase and will be part of the twenty twenty-one overlay project that NDOT's doing in that area anyway. Uh, we continue to market and, uh, generate these business attraction leads. Uh, HHIP, our future heartland industrial park, is our most marketable asset, just because it's shovel-ready. Uh, we have five lots available. Each lot has city water and sewer that directly to it. It also has Lidsco gas lines, RNC electricity. Uh, we've also done the drainage, so if someone buys a lot in the HHIP, a ten-acre lot, they could truly develop ten acres. They don't have to worry about drainage, that's already been taken care of with the site like drainage plan. Uh, so we've been, so any project that comes into the HHIP, uh, would be hooked up to the city utilities. Uh, and we, and we, that's not, our, our number one concern is existing industry, but the, but the, on the business attraction side, HHIP is, um, that's the, the product, the property that receives the most interest on our website and our LoopNet listing and we get the most calls about.